Good evening and welcome to the February 28th meeting of the Westboro Planning Board. We have a pretty full agenda, although some of these items will be continued. Just a reminder, this meeting will be recorded. We have a continuation of a public hearing for the earthmoving permit at 25 Gleason, continuation of the public hearing for 165 Flanders, site plan review, preliminary subdivision plan for 48 Flanders, continuation of public hearing for 19212 Oak Street, continuation of the public hearing to modify the commercial component of special permit TOV 2014-1, continuation of the public hearing for warrant article number 32, update zoning bylaws, an informal discussion regarding town meeting zoning articles, discussion of notice to intent and set of intent to sell and convert land under Mass General Law, Chapter 61, and a discussion regarding a vote to support the town article for sustainability coordinator position. So, Jim, do you have any remarks before we start? Oh, okay. We'll start with the 25 Gleason Street. Mike Scott.
Good evening. I'm Mike Scott from Land Design Collaborative here in town. I'm here on behalf of the Ward's and Milford Stone. And I don't have anything new to present tonight, other than maybe the conversations we've had with the Conservation Commission and with town staff and Ty &amp; Bond, the peer review for you folks. We met with, in the field, with Ms. Miller a week and a half ago, I believe it was, and reviewed sort of the conditions of the property today compared to the plans that we filed last summer. And we amended the plans to reflect some of emerging wetlands that have begun to creep beyond the limits that had been previously staked. We also added an area just north of the limits of the old wetland area that had been cleared to the plans per Ms. Miller's comments. And Ecotec was at that site, the environmental scientist, and they concurred that the wetlands were expanding. They met with the Conservation Commission a week and a half ago and talked with them over about the plans. And we met with Ty &amp; Bond and town staff last week remotely. And it sounds like they're nearly done with their review. We went through some of the technical aspects and resolved those issues, I think, for the most part during the call. And it sounds as though they expect to issue a letter to you with their recommendations, probably this week, I would guess. It didn't sound during that conversation or that call that there was anything problematic from the applicant's side. It was more a matter of establishing appropriate conditions and timelines for, you know, demonstrating compliance and achieving milestones and so on, so that they could demonstrate to the town that they're working towards the end and, in return, be allowed to do, continue doing what they're doing or do some work out there. And I think Ty &amp; Bond is going to try to prepare a set of conditions for your review or at least some resolution to how and how quickly this type of work should happen. So unless you want me to put plans up or do anything more, that's...
You think that'll be ready by the, we have a meeting on the 15th, but that's pretty full, so, but then we meet again on the 20, I'm sorry, Kristen, it's not here.
15 and 21st.
15 and the 21st. So you think the 21st or next month?
Yeah, certainly. I think if they are done by this week, that should be, you know, which I expect, the 21st. I'd at least like to, if we're going to continue, I'd prefer that date, just so we can try to get this done. I mean, ideally, this work would, I know there's still a 20-day appeal period after any approval. So, but ideally, this work could happen this year and even this spring if we, you know, if it closes that evening. Let's shoot for that. That's acceptable.
Before we continue, has everybody met our new Conservation Director? Jen, give a wave because you're on TV. This is Jennifer Miller, and everybody's name tags are here, so you can figure that out. Welcome. And any comments before I turn to questions? Okay. Any questions?
I had one question. Could you just address the fact of this emerging wetlands? Could you just address it a little bit more and say, I just, you know, you're talking about emerging wetlands. I mean, how much are emerging and how did this happen? And I'd just like to know a little more information about it.
Sure. There are two areas that the wetland system that was cleared, referred to as Wetland Sea because that's how it was flagged years ago, where the welland has begun to creep up slope. And my guess is a combination of the shallow groundwater and a combination, or in conjunction with the fact that the vegetation that was probably using the water, the mature tree canopy and whatnot is no longer there, no longer present. I mean, there may be other reasons why this is happening. You're at the bottom, it's, in both instances, it's at the bottom of the steep hill that's out, if you've been to the property, on the west side. And essentially, the wetland is slowly creeping uphill. So shallow to bedrock out there, the soils are what they are, and the water is just making its way to the surface. And some wetland vegetation is appearing in these two areas. There's a third area just north of and separate from the large wetland that was effectively dammed up by some work, earthwork. And so that's becoming an isolated wetland, which is protected under the wetlands, sorry, under the Westboro Wetland Bylaw and Regulation. So it's an area that had originally just, the topography had allowed the water to continue, but because of some earthwork, they've created a pool, for lack of a better term. And that has become a regulated area, which Ecotec concurs with Ms. Miller that it's because of the damming. And the discussion was to not remove the dam, but to leave it. So that's how the plans sit as we, as they are today.
So the Conservation Commission will take into effect, if it, will it continue to emerge?
So it's a, I would call it developing system. Do you want...
Yeah, can you come to the mic and just state your name, Jen?
So to try and answer your question, I think both of them would be considered developing or emerging because of where they're located. One of them is created because a roadway or a path was put in on a hillside. At the base of that slope, water's going to accumulate. And with the water accumulating there, plants in the area that like to be in the water are naturally going to start growing there. And so that area is the isolated wetland that Mike was talking about. It's been captured now, it's on the plan. Will that area continue to grow? It's hard to know at this point, but right now, it's captured on the plan. And certainly, you know, if we see that area growing as the restoration takes place, it's not part of the restoration, but if that area continues to grow or their activities increase the size of it, then that would be addressed on the plan. So a wetland line is always subject to change. That's why our notices of intent and AMRADs are only good for three years, because a wetland line can definitely change over time. Through our influences as humans and other activities such as beavers, those sort of things can always influence the wetland areas. And then the other area that Mike talked about is on a steep hillside where they had the impacts, where they impacted the wetland resource area. Because it's at the base of that steep hillside and there's clay, heavy clay soils, it's naturally going to start, it's going to hold that water as it comes down the hill and it's not going to drain as well. And so the plants are just kind of creeping up from the lower spots to that area because it's ideal conditions.
So does that then become a protected area also?
We did. We added it. So that, its current line is added. Whether it would continue to creep up the hill, I don't know. It's hard for a wetland to continue up a steep slope like that.
Right. Okay, I was just concerned when you started to talk about emerging wetlands, as to actually, if you're talking about emerging, how much more are you going to emerge? And, you know, what provisions the town is making to make sure that that's protected?
Yeah.
Or if it needs to be protected?
I would, I would say to your point, we had had the conversation with the property owners and the leasing that their activities at the site can continue to influence wetlands. So in other words, if they continue to work in an area, even a man-made area that pools water as an isolated wetland, becomes jurisdictional. So it's really important that they understand that and that they don't create their own, continue to create their own issues out there. And I think that's understood at this point.
Does the town continue to sort of go and look at this situation to make sure that, you know, there isn't further impact in some way or, I mean, I'm concerned only because that piece of property is kind of out in the boondocks. And, you know, I think this, unfortunately, is one of the reasons that it got as far as it did before it was really flagged and something needed to be done. And I guess my concern a little bit is whether the town has any thoughts about re-inspecting every so often to make sure that, you know, there isn't a continuation in impact upon the wetlands.
So our, the commission would continue to be involved at the site until the restoration is complete? And we're not even at the point yet where the restoration plan is issued, but it would continue for three years after, monitoring for three growing seasons is the standard. So we'd be involved at the site for at least another three years. And then if they came in with any type of site plan for ongoing use or continued operations, that obviously, there are jurisdictional areas, so that would come before the commission as part of that review process. Depending on what they're looking to do, they might need a notice of intent.
Thank you.
So you would go back, if they did come back in for another site plan, you would go back out and re-inspect at that point and re-establish where the wetlands boundaries are?
It would probably depend on like the lapse in time. Like if they're still in restoration and they came back with a site plan for uses outside of the wetland areas and outside of that 50-foot buffer zone, then we would kind of reassess at that point. If it's, if it's still within that timeframe, I don't see a need, because I'll already be going out there. I'll be making regular site visits during the restoration.
Sure.
But if, let's say it's five or 10 years down the road, then it certainly would warrant an additional site visit.
So I'm sure you've been brought up to date on the history of the site and some of the unauthorized activity that happened there. And so that's, I think, why Hazel's question is a valid one, that, you know, we don't want history repeating itself.
Sure.
And we want you guys kind of keeping tabs on them, so, unfortunately. Okay. Questions?
Thank you.
Do you have anything?
Nothing.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion on this?
Oh, Mark.
Oh, Fred, I'm sorry. I included you earlier in that.
Sorry, Fred Lynn, I'm the community development director. I'd like to go on record for a couple of things, Mark, if I could, and they may have to be addressed further on in this conversation. One of the things I want to be distinctly clear is that counsel, who is not here tonight, has made the point that he thinks the earthmoving permit, special permit, is only for the remediation. I adamantly disagree with that statement. I don't think any material should be moved off that site, regardless if it's for the remediation or otherwise, unless it's encompassed on the earthmoving permit. Counsel Brodsky actually asked me for an informal interpretation in May of '22, and I responded, or, I'm sorry, he asked in April of '22, and I responded in May 5th with a formal determination that any of this mining of material out there is subject to earthmoving permit through this board. He had a right of appeal through the ZBA. He chose not to take that appeal. So I want to make sure that we're very distinct in this. If he chooses to only do the earthmoving for the remediation now, he'll have to come back to this board for continued operations. I would also state that in the site visit that we did perform, that there's two piles of material now. One is probably six minus, the other one's processed gravel. They probably already have enough material to do, if not the whole remediation, a large part of that, without doing any more processing or moving of earth in that property. So I want to make sure that I'm clear on that, both those issues.
Sponsor?
No, I mean, I know that they had started processing the material before, I guess, before the enforcement hit, or maybe even after, but there are two piles. I don't, I've not done any kind of assessment on quantity. That being said, the material that was stockpiled in the wetland still has to be relocated out of the wetland in order for the restoration to occur. And again, their request to the board is to be able to first process what they need for the restoration, which could be done already, could already be available, I don't know that. And then process the rest of the material that comes out of the wetland area and haul it off-site. And that's the, not to take any of the other material, but again, that's, I think that's what Fred's alluding to.
Correct. Unless that's part of this special permit and it's authorized through this board. And I'm not looking to prohibit them mining or milling material out there. That's not the point. I just want it to be captured on the special permit, so then you can condition it for hours of operation, you can condition it for hauling routes. I don't have the ability to do that independent of this board. Generally, businesses aren't subject to hours of operation, so if they was doing this at midnight, say, I really can't oppose that. But if it's part of a special permit, that's when I have more teeth, if you will, to enforce that. So that's my concern, is that this board captures that whole process, so we know what the hours of operation, the hauling would be, if they're allowed to process where they could do it onsite and things like that.
So we've shown, yeah, go ahead. I was going to say, we've shown on the plan where the processing would occur in the truck route to get the material out. And I'm sure they have no concern regarding hours of operation. I mean, from that standpoint, they're going to work normal business hours. They're not looking to do this 24/7. And there wasn't a haul route, at least defined in the application, or at least a path to where they intend to take the material. So a lot of this stuff, and again, I think that's part of what Ty &amp; Bond is looking at trying to provide you, based on what they've read, both in the bylaw and what's on the plans and what was originally filed in terms of narrative and the application. From, speaking for Milford Stone, because I'm not here to represent the Ward side of it per se, but their interest in restoring this is first and foremost. But with that, they would like the opportunity to take that extra material away. And after they're done with that...
And that extra material has value to them because, in their industry.
Yeah.
So they still want to benefit monetarily from unauthorized activity.
It's what they're asking for.
I don't really want a pile of excess material sitting on the site. I, I haven't heard really a recommendation of any other, anything else to do with it other than to take it off-site. Is there really anything onsite that we, that we would need that material for? So as far as I'm concerned, I don't mind them taking it off-site, but we would regulate that, as Fred said, and that would be part of the earthmoving decision.
And that's completely understandable.
So just to, just as a point of procedure, I agree with everything that's been discussed here. The application, as it stands now, is for the remediation work. So I think it would be appropriate for them to amend the application to include and encompass all the work of the stone company as well as the Ward's. The Ward's may disagree with that, but if they don't include that in their application, they will not have a permit to remove material. Now, Milford Stone, I think, would be advised to do that now, because for the board's sake, I think, as Fred suggested, you want to be able to control the amount of material, the hours that they operate, and the routes that they haul. And right now, the application is only for the work associated with the remediation. And if they have adequate material onsite right now to complete the remediation, there's no need to allow any material to leave the site, unless it's part of a new or an amended application.
Yeah, I mean, I completely agree with that. If the, if you feel like the application needs to be amended, that should be amended. I also want to make sure that not just town departments, but Ty &amp; Bond are aware of the additional removal.
That was discussed on the call.
As long, you know, I mean, I don't want, and I also don't want that pile getting bigger between now and when you guys decide to...
Well, they have no, they have no equipment onsite.
In the middle of the night, start digging up some more material so we can take a little extra out.
Milford Stone doesn't have any equipment onsite presently.
Not today. If I may, I'd like to add one more suggestion, if I could.
Sure.
I'd also want to make sure that we capture the fact that they shouldn't co-mingle this with Boston Hill. So right now, they have a makeshift roadway that goes up to an adjoining property. They've been advised that that property would need its own earthmoving permit, but I'd want to make sure that we, I'd suggest that we include that somewhere in this decision, because the makeshift roadway is still there presently. So there's nothing to really prevent them from going up into the adjoining property.
When you, when you...
Do they have some, go ahead.
I'm just a question to Fred.
Sure.
On your building permit, will all these, I know you'll have a decision attached to it, but will, at the same time, when your building permit specifically set out these regulations and things essentially, does your building permit usually do that or not?
Well, the problem, so the distinction here is that, and the reason why they're in front of the board, because there is no building permit here. So if there wasn't a building permit, they were doing something that justified a building permit, they wouldn't have to see this board. We could capture it on the building permit. In this case, the only operations is earthmoving.
Right, well, yeah, but they need a permit for the earthmoving, I guess.
They need the permit from this board. They don't need a building permit.
So Fred, you're...
Nothing from the building department?
No, that's, that's the whole point, and that's the reason I bring my comments to this board, because you have jurisdiction, I do not.
So Fred, you're going to put that in writing so we can...
I can't, my recommendations, I certainly can do that, yes.
So as far as the Boston Hill property, do they have permission from the neighbor to take things or...
Well, so, if I may, the problem has been, over the last few years, and this is how it actually stopped a couple, or, actually, it's '22 now, I think we stopped them. They were basically given a verbal cease and desist because they were mining materials, actually, earth occurring, they were taking down trees on the hill. But they had manufactured a roadway onto the Ward property, so the material was being removed and brought through. Some of the material was being brought through the Ward property. I can't tell you exactly what, but they were accessing the Ward, the adjoining property through the Ward property. So they weren't going up, I can't think of the road.
Valente.
Valente, thank you very much. They, they weren't accessing it through Valente, they were actually accessing the hill through Ward property.
Who owns that property, the adjoining property? Do they own that?
My understanding is that it's under the Massard control, and that's...
It's in a trust, I think you...
Yeah, it's Gemstone is the name of the company that owns it, that's the Massad family.
However...
No.
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 Yeah, it's, my understanding is under the Massad control.
They're family, different family.
It's under the Massad family.
But Milford Stone has been involved in both properties. Again, to state that, they have been advised that they would need an earthmoving permit or a building permit or some kind of permit to do work on the hill as well. Separate and distinct, but the reason I bring this up is because they've intermingled the two properties.
Okay, well, I think clearly, when we discuss removal routes and limits of operation, we should include some language that would make that clear to the applicant.
Great.
Okay.
And the path that, or the intended route is out Gleason Street. There's no intent to take anything up and down the hill.
Yes, if you restrict the routes of hauling, you won't include Valente Drive. So that would preclude that. But I think it's also important to note that there'll be no work, no hauling, I'm sorry, no disturbing or grating removal or removal of any material on the Boston Hill property. So the approval would specifically identify the property where the work is to occur by street address and by assessor's map and parcel.
Can we back up really quickly to the history? Because you just brought up an issue with a makeshift road going across another property. Is there remediation necessary on that other property?
From a conservation standpoint?
And who would be responsible?
Because of where that one's located, it would be outside of Conservation's jurisdiction. It's not in a wetland area or an associated buffer zone. So it wouldn't fall within Conservation's jurisdiction. It's up a steep hillside.
Thank you. And my thought would be if they would disturb 20,000 square feet or 500 cubic yards of material, then it would become, on the, my interpretation, part of the earth, a earthmoving permit or building permit.
Right, but you've already said that they cleared...
Yes.
Clear cut. I mean, I'm assuming all of this project is going to restore some trees, or are we not including that in our...
Unfortunately, it's a separate property. I'm not sure how I tie the two.
Well, even on, even on the Ward property, are they going to restore what they cut?
The application is to restore the wetland and the 50 feet beyond.
Probably not, Mark. I doubt they're addressing anything they did on the hill. So part, the hill is, again, some of the property is on the Ward property that they're disturbed, and some runs into the adjoining property.
We have, I mean, if you want to completely clear cut your lot, do you have to get a permit for that?
Yeah, if you clear...
So they did that without a permit on their lot and on their...
You clear more than 20,000 square feet, yes.
Right.
And there is an enforcement order on that property. It goes back a long way.
On which?
Mr. Sanderson owned the property that now Mr. Massad owns. And he cleared seven acres of land without any permits. And the then-building commissioner, who was Joe Enman, issued a cease and desist order, required him to come to the planning board for a clearing and earthmoving permit, which he did. Mr. Sanderson did do that. He went through the hearing process and never finished the permit. He then entered into an agreement to sell the property, and he did so. So the property has since grown back up, and trees were planted by Mr. Sanderson on that property. But it has been disturbed yet again by Milford Stone.
Right.
So I, yeah, I'm still, I understand that the earthmoving and the remediation project is for the wetlands, but to me, if you do something like clear cutting without a permit, why would we give them a permit for only half of the, what I consider the full remediation would be restoration of what they cut.
Different owners, Mark. So Fred and I were involved in a, an enforcement issue...
No, I'm not talking about what Mr. Sanderson did. You know, I wouldn't expect them to...
You're talking about present...
I'm talking about this little makeshift roadway that went, and I'm talking about the Ward property itself, which was obviously clear cut without a permit. And it doesn't sound like it's going to be restored in any way, other than the wetlands area.
So Fred and I were, were informed by the town of Shrewsbury that this work was going on, because you can't see it from Westboro. So because there was a project in Shrewsbury that abutted it, they informed us. And Fred and I met with, I forget, was it, who the gentleman was, I don't want to misspeak, I don't want to use someone's name, but when our offices were at Public Works, we met with them, and they acknowledged the work. But they stopped. This work that's occurred now on the Ward property into the Massad property is new work. It's not even the work that we were informed about on the Shrewsbury property.
Yeah, I guess my problem is if you cut down 1,000 trees and you come in here for a permit, I want you to put back up some trees or plant some trees.
So the plan that's been...
It's that simple to me.
The plan that's been submitted has hundreds of trees in the wetland and that first 50 feet, which is the area that was most recently cleared on the, on the Ward property.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking for, Mark.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm glad.
Thank you. I still don't know if anybody's planting trees on the neighboring property, but we'll deal with that when they come in for a permit.
Part of that's in Shrewsbury, isn't it?
Not the area that we're talking about.
No, not the area we're talking about. It's, the area we're speaking of is wholly in Westboro.
I'm probably going to die before that permit comes in, but if they ever come in for a permit, I'm going to make them plant some trees.
There you go. That's the tough part, Mark, is albeit the same players are involved, it's different properties, the enforcement's different. I could go after the Massards, but I think it'd be a futile attempt at banging my head against the wall multiple times.
Okay, so, now, any more questions? I've ranted about three...
To make sure that Fred, you put everything very clearly in a memo to our board as to your concerns and what you think, you know, would be appropriate to put in this permit as conditions.
Yeah, I think, I actually did forward you some of my comments previously, but I will reiterate those and include some more after tonight's discussion.
This started a while ago, so I, I'm glad you got, came in to refresh my memory on that, because I didn't...
Sure.
Anything else before we move on?
We need a date to continue the hearing.
21st. Right, not the 15th, meeting, that's a Wednesday, the 15th is a Wednesday night, so it's not our regular meeting. It's, we were just going to do zoning and a couple of other...
Yeah, it's the following Tuesday.
Our regular meeting's the 21st.
So did you formally vote on that, March 21st?
No, we have to, we need a motion for that.
You have a motion for the 15th.
Anybody want to make that?
I move that we continue the public hearing for earthmoving permit on 25 Gleason Street to March 21st.
At 6:30.
At 6:30.
As recorded by the applicant.
Second.
I got a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Four to zero. Four to zero in favor, thank you.
All right, thank you, take care.
Next item on the agenda is a continuation of the public hearing for 165 Flanders Site Plan. We have a, a letter from Bowler Engineering requesting a continuance. I'll read that into the record, dated February 8th, 2023, Planning Board, Town of Westboro, Attention Jim Robbins, Regarding EG America 165 Flanders Road. Dear Mr. Robbins, on behalf of EG America, we would like to request a continuance of the planning board hearing for the project at 165 Flanders Road until the first planning board meeting scheduled in March. If you should have any questions or require, acquire additional information, please do not hesitate to contact me. Sincerely, Andrew Platt from Bowler Engineering, on behalf of the applicant. Any questions on that?
I had one question, which is, and it actually came from the minutes when we were talking about, and what is the wash bay being used for?
We're gonna have to ask that question at the next hearing, that's not, Hazel, I don't want, we're missing a member, and if we discuss the project, A, the applicant's not here to answer the question, and B, we would have to get the missing member to sign a mullin waiver, and if they miss another meeting, then they can't vote.
I can send you the project narrative again.
Okay, I just think it was left out of the minutes, that's all I was saying.
Okay, I, again, I just wanna be careful that we don't-
Right, but as I said, it was just a question that pertained to the minutes, because I think, I think some language was left out of the minutes, so I was just trying to get a clarification on that.
All right, well, that's different, and without Kristen here, I'd, yeah, all right, well, let's move that on, and we'll make a note to get that question answered for you. So Jim, before we motion and vote on this, do we have to do a mullin waiver on this for?
No, because no testimony was taken.
Okay, what about the previous?
Where the applicant was here, yes.
Okay, so John would have to do a mullin waiver on, okay, can we make a note to ask him to do that? I get confused a little about when it's required and when it's not required, so I need you to remind me. Does somebody wanna make a motion on 165 Flanders, continuance?
I move that the planning board continue the public hearing for the site plan review application of 165 Flanders Road to Wednesday, actually, do we wanna?
No, the 21st, I think.
Yeah, Tuesday, March the 21st, 2023, at 6:30 PM, as requested by the applicant in a letter dated-
I'm sorry, did they put a?
I think the 15th, aren't they?
No, they just said until the first planning board meeting scheduled in March, which is the 15th, so I think we should schedule it for the 15th, and if they-
Okay, I'll reread that. I move that the planning board continue the public hearing for the site plan review application of 165 Flanders Road to Wednesday, March 15th, 2023, at 6:30 PM, as requested by the applicant, in a letter dated February 8th, 2023.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor? That's four to zero in favor of continuance. Next item on the agenda is a preliminary subdivision plan for 48 Flanders Road. We have Barry from Waterman Design, if you name and title and, any comments before we start, Jim? No? Okay, go ahead.
Good evening, Barry, Adjacent Civil Engineer for WDA Design Group. Thank you for being patient as we continued it for a month or so, as we went through and took your initial comments that we've had, some more discussions with the engineering and building department, and made some modifications to the designs that you recently received. Basically, what we did was we changed the realignment of the road further up the hill. By moving it 50 or 55 feet up the road, it gained us two and a half to three feet in elevation. What that did was allowed us to reduce our slopes going up the road, so instead of looking for a 9% slope, we're now less than seven, or at seven. Reduce some of the cuts and fills and so forth, and then also that segued into alignments for the houses and their driveways so that we could meet the minimum, A, on Flanders Road, the minimum level area prior to getting to Flanders Road, as well as leveling areas in the driveways, minimum slope requirements before and after driveways and garages, so it actually worked in pretty well. And this also incorporated, instead of the three lots before, now four lots, and that fourth lot that we added is the inclusion of house number 52, that I believe the applicant would like to raise at some point, and then put a new, new home in there.
Okay, questions?
I happened to notice, as I drove by the other day, that looks like you're already taking stuff out of the existing house, is that correct? I mean, I noticed a large Harvey's.
I, I am not aware of that. I haven't talked with Josiah as far as that, so.
I mean, it just looked to me like they were already beginning the demolition on that, I mean, you know, I'm sorry about that, because the house has historic value, and unfortunately-
Well, they have to get a demolition permit, and they wouldn't get that without going to the Historic-
No, they already have a demolition permit.
They do have a demolition-
The thing is that they, they came before this historical commission about three years ago, no, 2020. And they received a demolition permit, and I did go talk to Fred because I wondered whether there was a possibility that the demolition permit had expired, but it turns out that there's no regulation that says when it expires. In other words, we gave them a demolition delay, which was for nine months, the nine months has passed, but there seems to be, there's nothing seems to be in the regulations, and there's nothing in the Historical Commission regulations, or the state regulations, as far as I know, that says if you don't complete the demolition by X time, then you have to come back again, it doesn't seem to expire. So unfortunately, I'm afraid that the original decision, which the Historical Commission made, which was all the authority we had, which was to delay the demolition from not already passed, and they don't need to come back to the Historical Commission, doesn't seem to be, doesn't seem to be that the demolition permit expire, I mean, the approval.
Okay, I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah, well, I, as I said, I did go to the building department, because I was concerned, when I drove by the property, and there's a large Harvey's dumpster out there, which seems to be filled, which gives me the impression that perhaps already they seem to be taking things out of the house, and historically, it's, it's got a, a very unusual and historic beehive oven in that house. The Historical Commission was hoping in some way that that house could be saved, but unfortunately, I think we're kinda stuck on this, and I'm sorry that they felt it necessary to go ahead and demolish this house.
Just as a point of clarification on that, sorry, I don't mean to cut you off, Lisa. Fred and I discussed this, and the demo delay that the Historic Commission went through, as you correctly explained, has run its toll, so they don't need to delay anymore. However, the actual demo permit was never completed, so they do need to apply for the demo permit, you do need to go through that, and you should contact Fred tomorrow. Sorry, Lisa.
So can I just ask a, a general question, both to you and Hazel, because Hazel, apparently you're on the Historical Commission? Are demo delay expirations only set out by local bylaws and not the state?
Correct.
So is that something that Historical Commission might wanna look into?
Well, yeah.
They've amended it.
They've amended it? What does that mean?
Yeah, the town amended it.
To, to say what?
To 130 days, beyond, instead of 90 days, but the permit was granted before the amendment, so the, it's been two years anyway, so it's long expired.
Yeah, I understand your question, I think, I don't know whether, I'd want a legal opinion on that, whether you can put a, put an expiration date on a demo, on a demo delay permit.
I'm almost positive you can.
Think you probably-
Yeah, I've seen, I've seen expiration before.
Which you certainly look into.
Yeah.
Yeah, the state did change the regulations allowing a further period of time, and I think it's up to a year and a half, that's the maximum allowable.
So in other words, what you're saying is that if it's free, if someone has not followed through on the demo permit, within a year and a half of its expiration date, then lose that permit?
So just to be clear, the town is allowed to have their own demolition delay, it doesn't have to conform to the state, it just can't be more than 100, I mean, more than a year and a half.
That's not what we're talking about, though. We're talking about once a permit is granted, and that time has passed, does that permit then expire? Hazel seems to think we don't have any regulations in place that put an expiration date on, so once that passes.
That's something, yeah, I want a legal opinion on whether you can put-
Well, there's no expiration on a site plan either. I think that where the state statute is silent, the town has the right to, to establish their own regulations, and there's-
John's suggesting that we do that, and it would be the Historic Commission that does that.
But for this case, they came in under the old bylaw.
Right. Well, it wouldn't matter if they came in under the new bylaw, they would have just had to, the demo delay permit, the demolition delay would have expired, and they would have, they wouldn't have to go through that process again, even if it was three years later, that-
I think, I think we're on the same page.
You know, if they don't execute the demolition within a year, that, that expire, and they have to come back and possibly do another demo delay.
Goes to the same procedure again.
So that, that's a matter of the Historic Commission changing their regulations?
It was changed at town meeting. It was several years ago, I remember it.
No, it's a, I don't think you're understanding still what we're saying. I, I know what you're saying, that the demolition delay was extended from-
Right. It's extended from two months. But the question is, if someone does not move forward within that amount of time, you've got the 18, you have 18 months, in other words, you can delay the demo permit for 18 months. After that 18 months, which then essentially they have an approval to go ahead and do the demo, the question then is, if they do not move ahead with the demo within a certain amount of time, does the, does the approval lapse?
It, well, they never finished their demo permit. They don't have a demo permit. They never had a demo permit.
If they come in for a demo permit now, would they be subject to another demolition delay?
Yeah, I don't know, that's up to Fred. Fred asked them to apply.
Yeah, that's, that's another question, is that since they did not follow through on the demo permit, then essentially everything on it is wiped out, and therefore, if they have to apply for a brand-new permit, then do they have to go back to the Historical Commission again, because the permit essentially has lapsed, and any approvals they had under that permit has then lapsed.
All right, so now we have two questions, whether they have to go through the demolition delay process with Historic Commission again, which, you know, we don't have authority over, but also, how would the Historical Commission add an expiration date on that demolition?
So we can get all caught up in all the regulations and the timelines, what are we trying to accomplish?
Yeah, I got, I got a question. Typically, when you get your, a demo permit, there's particular reason you're gonna move and knock your house down, you get an approval to demo, for whatever reason, does that, does the house suddenly become that much better, that you don't need to knock it down, or what are you trying to achieve in the end to keep the longevity? And/or if he waits out your 180 days, or 90 days, whatever your delay was, then it becomes, I don't know what he had to do to finish it up, but the, can he wait until the house becomes, what's the word I'm looking for, condemned? Roof caves in, everything else, it becomes useless lot anyways, what happens then?
Well, so I, I, yeah, I'm not, all I'm, all I'm trying to do is follow the procedures that are set out. So if they, if anybody else applies for a demolition permit right now, they have to go to the Historic Commission and get a waiver on the demolition delay, right? That's the procedure.
Yep.
It's not new, it's just something everybody does. Now, does the fact that they did this three years ago absolve them from following procedure now? And I don't know the answer to that. And so we need to know the answer to that, because we don't have the authority to change that procedure, if that's a requirement, and, you know, we can, we can issue-
Are we talking about this particular property, or?
I'm talking about this particular-
So in this particular property, I can, I'm pretty sure they do not get a demolition permit, DPW did not sign off.
Right.
Because DPW does not, we never sign off on a demolition permit to, until they have a bill of disconnection, meaning they physically disconnect water and sewer services. Obviously, since people were living there, they still have water and sewers, so there was no disconnection, or there's not a demolition permit.
Right.
So there may be one in limbo that I have not, or DPW engineering has not signed off on. Now, it's a policy thing, issue, or outside of this, meaning would Historical Commission get a chance to re-review that? Obviously, though, in this particular, just not even changing policy tonight, but this particular property, if there's a request from this board for me to add something to my approval, once I see that, I'd all be open to adding that to my approval, and we could also, within discussion with Fred, be relevant as well.
Well, Fred, it sounds to me like Fred has already said they have to apply for a new demolition permit, so does that new application mean that it's gonna go to, I mean, maybe we need Fred to, do we need Fred to answer?
He wants them to finish the process that they began three years ago, that's what he wants them to do, he wants them to come back and meet with him. He, it's totally his authority what he does next.
Whether he issues-
And we have informed him that he needs to go and speak with Fred, I think that's where it starts.
And just to answer your general question, the purpose of the demolition delay permit is to see whether an owner can be persuaded to keep a historic building, because they can renovate it or do something with it, they don't just have to tear it down and put it in a brand-new house, I mean, this is general policy. So what we're trying to do is save historical buildings in town, and that's the whole purpose of it.
I understand.
In this particular case, John has put a new house.
Yeah, and so that's, that's the problem that-
More, you know, more importantly, you know, if, if they do go to the Historical, if they do have to go back to the Historical Commission, and the Historical Commission may or may not grant a waiver, it's not in our jurisdiction to grant that waiver, so I, I need to know if that's a requirement, and if Fred's gonna require that or not. If he does require them to go back to the Historical Commission, Historical Commission may say, find another, you know, find somebody to take the beehive oven and put it in another building, or, I don't know, before they, I don't really know, I'm not on that board.
If Fred's got changes to, I'm not sure about the Historical Commission, but when you request comments around the apartments, I would assume that he could put those comments in there at that point, I mean, because I haven't even officially given you a comment around the design yet, so, and I know tonight, I believe tonight is to find out whether Watermen should pursue the current design, the revised design that they're, have now, or, I guess, look at the old design, right, so tonight is to decide, the new design we're pursuing.
And that's in our jurisdiction?
Yes.
So this other stuff is kind of out of our, but I, I need to know, because, because-
The new design is definitely, and I'll say it now, since we're talking, a new demo, the new design is definitely better for DPW's engineering stances, that it's not the better design, or the new design, with the four-lot design, which would include demoing.
That's it, I mean, they're picking up another lot by demoing this house.
I completely understand that, yes, but I-
But that's an existing house already. But that's an existing house already, so they're not really gaining a lot. It just--
They're not gaining a lot.
Nothing to say if the project wasn't here in front of you, and they could go get a building permit for a brand-new house, then of course, the Historical Commission could comment about that.
Right. I will take this moment to put a plug in. Jen Doherty, who used to be on the Historic Commission, who's now working for the state, sent out a work, upcoming deconstruction workshop, work group for reuse markets for building materials, which sounds to me like historic buildings, one man's trash is another man's treasure, right? There may be somebody who wants this Beehive Oven and just doesn't know about it, you know, somebody rich with an antique somewhere that wants to put a Beehive Oven in their kitchen, whatever. But all I'm saying is, I need to know the procedure that we need to follow. Fred, I think, has to make that determination. Ultimately, it's not in our jurisdiction, anyway, as a planning board. So we should get back to the, what we're really here for is, do we like this new design better or not?
All right. Let me ask one question. I would like to know whether they have demolished that Beehive Oven and taken out his job--
I have never been in the house. I have no clue what is going on--
Well, as I said, my concern was that I saw this large Harvey's container there, and I would really like to know, I realize this is not a planning board issue, but it is historical, and I'm--
All right. Well, he doesn't know the answer to that. So maybe you can find that out for us.
I would like to know whether they've taken, because there were a lot of, on the first floor, it had moldings and various wood and things that were there, plus this Beehive Oven. And consequently, if they've already destroyed that, I'm going to be upset about it.
Let me ask you this. Who advises the Historic Commission on, on something like changing their regulations to include--
I don't know, because the last time it was changed, it came from the Historic Commission. And by the way, it's a town bylaw. So it's, it's dealt with differently at town meetings.
All right. So I think you should start with, maybe the Historic Commission, see if they want to approach Christie with a change so that there is an expiration date on that.
Yeah, I'm looking, yeah, I'm looking towards October on that, yeah.
Okay.
Very much so.
All right.
Can I just ask, I know this is off the subject, but let me just ask another question. Has there ever been any consideration by this board to put a time limit on site plans?
So, site plan isn't even discussed in the State Zoning Act, check 48, is silent on the, on the site plan, because the state wants the towns to set up their own regulations. So I suppose you could, if you wanted to, say, two years, because that's what we used to use for special permits, and I think it's reasonable. We've extended that to three years now, and everything except our marijuana permits. So if you wanted to change your site plan regulations to put a time limit on it, you would put that in your site plan regs. And your site plan regs are voted on by this board. They don't go to town meeting.
Let me ask you, would that affect only site plans issued going forward?
Yes.
Or would that, that wouldn't affect people--
Something that's already applied for, like this one, or this subdivision, or the three site plans that we have in front of us now, would not impact them.
However, we could put a condition in, right? Each of those decisions saying that this decision expires within two years of issuance.
Yeah, they could appeal it, though. But you could put it in there.
It'd probably be better of doing a bylaw. I mean, I would think--
I'm saying as a stopgap.
Doing, yeah, as a stopgap. And, but it is, it just occurred to me after this discussion that maybe it's something the planning board ought to look at, because you have some, we've got some site plans that are like 10 years old.
Yes, we do. We have, they're, yeah, we have several commercial site plans that are that old.
And just to put the fear of God in you guys, the problem with having, we're dealing with this in Hopkins, with the subdivision, is when you have these plans that are designed a certain time and have no expiration, stormwater becomes an issue. Because now you're working under old stormwater calculations, so anything that's designed is going to be undersized. So I would strongly advocate to get some kind of expiration date for site plans.
Okay.
Sorry.
I think, I'm making a note now to take that up with the new plan.
There you go. That's right. It's an issue to be dealt with in future--
Somebody else's problem.
I don't think--
Talk to her.
I don't think you're going to get, we're going to get that changed in the next month.
But it just, it was something that occurred to me when this all started to come up, and I began to worry about--
I think that's a really good point about putting a time deadline on, for them to act. I mean, the pushback will be, and I know we're off-topic here, but the pushback will be on the owner of a property who's marketing a site plan and is, has no intention to build it. We have, we have property owners in town that get site plans that are generic. They put a box on the property, and they say it'll be one of the following uses, and the drainage is analyzed, the grading, the access, that's all analyzed. They get an approval, and then they market that. So there, there would be pushback on that, because there's no guarantee that they'll sell it, say, within a year or two years, which is why we have some old site plans.
All right. Back to 48 Flanders. We have a new plan here for four unit, four-lot subdivision. It looks like there's a little open space area for drainage. That'll be held by, what, the HOA? That serve any drainage use, or is that just to avoid the corner lot requirement?
Drainage use.
What else you can say?
Exactly. What else?
So, where is the open space?
It's on the-- The lower left-hand corner of the drive.
The road. It's a very small memo here.
Engineering didn't like it underneath the roadway.
There's a little triangle.
I have a full set here, John, if you want to get it.
I didn't see that, I thought. Because it, does the C1 go all the way behind 44, 46, and then down to touch Flanders? Is that all one lot?
C1 comes all the way down to--
Yeah, to the--
This, this here, to the open space. It's extremely unusual shape.
Why?
Why? Because they needed the size, probably?
Didn't need the size on that particular lot. It's just the way the road curves around, but I need room there also on a flatter portion to install some kind of infiltration on that lower corner for whatever's coming off of--
That can't be in the open space.
Yeah. And whether, you know, I can narrow it up and give the land to the guy to south of that, 46, 45.
You can't make some of that lot go into the open space?
I think the infiltration can't be in the open space, probably.
Yeah.
True.
Drainage can go in the open space.
Okay. Yeah, so why don't you just expand the open space?
So what he should do is ask for a waiver from the, the regulation, noting that you can't create these little open space lots to avoid zoning non-compliance. It's right in our regulations. I can help you find it if you need that help. But, so the, I, I think that this parcel is a good idea for the drainage, but it needs to be done properly. Because he could give the property to the abutter, but that would make that lot a corner lot, and they'd have to observe the, the minimum frontage on a conventional subdivision, which is 200 feet, and they probably wouldn't have it.
I'm saying, why don't they draw the line, the property line, at the boundary of 46 and 44 to the new road, and then expand the open space--
Yeah.
--to that area behind 46?
I can't see--
I mean, I think--
So you would cut off this part of 44?
So basically, yeah, you're drawing one here, and then this--
Okay. Yeah, as long as you meet the, the lot size, and you'd certainly still have enough frontage. Well, I don't want to say certainly.
So you'd have to leave 44 and 40. If you change 46 property line--
No, 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 not changing--
Just 44.
No, not, no, I'm saying continue the property line between 46 and 44 up to the road, which then cuts off C1 from this portion. So you're drawing C1--
The effect of that would be, the new owner of C1 wouldn't have any rights to construct, put a shed in there, or--
Yep.
You know, I can't imagine they'd put a swimming pool that far away. But who knows, right? Like, you know, I think it's better off as open space, so I agree with John on that.
Be a drainage line that cuts across that back portion anyways, but it won't hurt.
The other thing I'm really concerned about on this, Barry, is because it's not an open space, and I know I've asked you that before, and I'd really like them to reconsider that.
I believe there wasn't enough frontage for that, so--
Well, there's not enough frontage, or you would have to apply for a waiver in the open space permit.
Yeah. I don't know the, the history. This has been going on for a super-long time, so--
The, the septic system's on, or is it not?
Well, you can put the septic system in the open space. We did that at Silver Hollow, right?
What would the benefit be of an open space?
Well, right now, you've got houses that are going to back up right to the, I don't know what street that is behind. You've got, I mean, these people are, we saw at Silver Hollow where people, all of a sudden, had houses in their backyard, and--
It's Hundreds Road that comes in there.
What's that?
Hundreds Road that comes in there.
It's Hundreds Roads, or--
Hundreds Roads behind there, but that's pretty far away.
Don't like the open space concept.
For this lot?
A, people use the open space as their private property, and basically, people end up using it as their private property, and it doesn't really function as the open space that you intend, unless it's a very large parcel of land.
Okay.
And B, they do not have the open space parcels, which is small, so all of those kind of really struggle constantly trying to get horizontal separation between the water and sewer. Then, once you add the filtration systems, you end up pretty great, trying to keep it on the individual property. There's just not enough space, and you cram the biggest houses on there, and--
Okay. I'm, I'm fine with that. I'm not really at, what I'm, where I was going was that, with that, is, is it possible to do some type of no-cut zone so that they'll maintain, we'll know that they'll maintain some type of screen, you know, natural screening between them, the new houses and the neighbors? And I don't know how much space, like, I, I don't see the scale on here, and even if I did, I probably couldn't figure it out fast enough.
Forty or 50 scale, yeah.
Is this exactly where the houses are going to be?
I, um, I think that two I definitely know are, is the fourth lot and the third lot. They are pretty tight, and--
Right. So C, C1 and C2, though, are the ones that are--
Two can shift a little bit, but--
I mean, C, C4 is right next to 52, right? And there was a house there already, so you're not springing anything on the neighbor.
No.
C, C3 has the Prentice Forest open space behind it, so you're not going to see anybody infringing on, you know, the people at Prentice Forest are still going to have open, you know, something behind them. I'm more concerned about these lots on Flanders, like 42 Flanders is now, is going to have a house in their backyard. I don't know what--
So the house at 42--
Yeah, this is Hundreds, 2 Hundreds Road, or 170--
Listen. The house on 42 is where it is, because you see the arc that's drawn behind them. They have to hold the minimum required furniture to the rear of the building line, and the minimum required furniture is measured parallel to the side lot lines. So that really puts the house in a very specific location. C1, although it looks pretty big, had an issue with maintaining the lot width requirement. And so that's why the arc is on the plan.
Right.
And that arc, then, when they apply for a building permit, the house is going to have to be within the arc. And so if you're worried about them being too close to 42, or too close to 40 in the rear yard, they can't, because they won't meet the--
I'm more worried about trying to maintain some privacy, Jim. So can we do like a no-cut zone where the existing trees can't come down? Because I, I think that would, at least, you know, other than that, it'd put up a big fence.
Yeah. I, we do that in a lot of subdivisions, but somebody's going to have to enforce that, just so you know. And I got a call recently on a subdivision that this board approved that had no-cut zone on it, and the property owner had flipped the property several times, and the new owners know nothing about no-cut zones, so they cut the trees. And so we find out about it after the trees are cut. So, I mean, you can, you can put the no-cut zone on the, on the property, but it's going to be hard to maintain.
So behind C2, there's a 12-foot wide trail easement, which looks like it's, this is two Westbrook Community Land Trust, I'm assuming--
That's where the B wall's going to go, right?
Yes, the, where the old trolley line is, yes.
So, I mean, that would be good for a no-cut easement, because then that's going to be traveled, and people--
Right. This area here, definitely.
Regularly.
Well, we can't have a no-cut easement where the trail's--
No, I'm, I'm saying on the property. You know, starting from wherever it is. Because the trail easement is what it is, and then you start--
Right. I just, I don't know how far it is from the house on C2 to where that trail easement is. If it's 75 feet, or, here, I can, so, the trail easement is that lighter gray line, right? So how far is it from there to the house? From--
Yep.
This point here to here, say?
Forty, fifty from here to there.
Right. So it's kind of hard to put a no-cut when they've only got a 45-foot backyard.
Yeah, they need to be able to have a backyard.
I think you, would, personally, would be a, you know, need to put, condition in, they need to put some screening in versus a no-cut line, because it's very difficult when you're looking at above, you've got a tree that's gigantic that shows a limit of a tree line, but actually, you may have an extra 20 feet underneath that very large oak. But at some point, that tree's going to hit a house, and you're going to want to take it down.
So you, you've answered my question, then. You're going to add some screening to this plan.
Yes.
But does it, I mean, does it even matter? Are people going to want to have the trail right in their backyard? They're going to probably put a fence up there, no? I would think. If it's 45-foot deep--
Maybe, maybe the applicant puts the fence up. I mean, I, I'm more, I'm more worried about, I mean, we've seen, we saw this again, and we just saw this at Silver Hollow, where we spent months trying to satisfy neighbors' privacy concerns. And, and the developer there had to come back in. We, you know, we made, Jim and I made multiple site visits. The developer ended up putting up additional fence, additional plantings. I'm still not sure the abutters, the, the abutters are all sat, you know, completely satisfied, but they ended up saying, I have to live with this now. And what I'm trying to do is get ahead of that.
Okay, I understand. And I recognize these are a preliminary set of drawings. I think we've got it, from what I'm hearing from the board, as far as the general layout, the location, everything, we're kind of okay. This minutia of screening and stuff, I think, in the definitive plan, I, I understand. I got your concerns on that stuff. I can, engineering will work with everybody and do what we've got to do. I like your idea, John, is whether I need to cut the, the property line there and just call that whole thing, open space there in that corner. That's fine.
Barry, I'm also anticipating what happens when you send out the letters to the abutters and they see this. I guarantee we're going to have some people in here asking--
Oh, absolutely.
Asking about screening. So let's get ahead of it.
Yep, I agree.
I'm not, I'm not saying that you need to answer the question now, I just--
Want to be a father?
A father, yeah, yeah.
You want to be a father?
Right. And he's, we know he's not going to care, so, or at least at this--
Yeah, Mr. Rich is number 44.
Right.
So that's, so, needless to say, I find that short-sighted, because someday, he's going to sell that house, and if he gets the screening put up now, that'll help him with his value of his home someday. But I guess, you know, he can do that for, you know, maybe he won't care, but I think some of these other abutters will. And I'm just trying to get ahead of that. I'm not suggesting that you have to show me right, you know, right where it's going to be and what it's going to be, but you've answered me that plantings, or fencing, or some other type of screening is probably better than a no-cut zone, because I don't think-- I'm asking these new--
And it's tough, though.
And the enforcement on that is, is difficult. All right. All right, that was my biggest concern. Any other questions?
I just sort of like to make a general comment. I'm, I'm concerned about the plans we are beginning to get where we're kinda shoehorning houses into small lots, which really.
Sorry?
I don't know, I.
Yeah, so.
I just, I find it difficult in the fact that, that a lot like this, which is really a very difficult lot and really something that probably is not, generally wouldn't be thought of as developable, and there are other examples in town where, you know, we're trying to shoehorn these houses into, you know, very small lots that affect the neighborhood.
Yeah, so we could.
Just a general comment.
We could look at a zoning change that, I don't, I forget what it's called, like lot uniformity or?
Yeah, I, I don't know, I would push back on that, because I don't know if it's necessarily the lots are too small or the houses are too big.
Well, that could be, yeah.
I think that's the problem.
Right.
I live on a fifth of an acre and my lot is perfectly fine, but my house isn't big.
Right.
It's, it's when you try and put a three thousand square foot house on a quarter of an acre.
Exactly.
That's the problem.
So as I said, I just concerned people with what's going on in the town generally.
Well, so that may be, one of the, one of the problems I had with that last open space was that we couldn't, we couldn't allow them to do twenty thousand square foot lots instead of fifteen, like fifteen is the maximum written into our open space, which I find inflexible. I, I would like to see that changed so that if we have a lot where we're getting, you know, like the writings were getting forty-six acres of open space, but now we've got fourteen, fifteen thousand square foot lots, I'd rather see twenty-five thousand square foot lots and only get forty acres. But we can't do that with the open space, that's the way the bylaw was written, we can't go higher than fifteen thousand. So that's different. I, I personally, I don't like this practice of, you know, coming up with really weird-shaped lots just to avoid, just to create the front edge and create the, or to avoid the corner lot requirement, which is maybe too stringent, I don't know, I think maybe it, you know, it should only have to have two hundred feet.
But you see that everywhere, because I mean, you see these towns that are almost.
But I've also seen, you, I forget, I don't think it's called lot uniformity bylaws, but it's, there's some type of language that you can build into the zoning that will alleviate that, and I'll, I'll do some research on it.
It's like lot conformity formulas, right? Where you do a formula and it's gotta have this certain formula.
Yeah, some, some towns put a, put a circle on a lot and they, the house has to go in the circle. But what I would encourage you to do is look at subdivisions that are built and see what you like about them and then look at the plan. Like, for example, if you looked at three subdivisions in town that you like, we have the plans for those subdivisions and see what the lots look like and what the size of those lots are and what the zoning is that created those lots. And then look at what goes on in other towns, I'm sure that you've driven through neighborhoods in other towns where you like lots. We did a, many years ago, we did a field trip to Sudbury, looked at several subdivisions, we went to Southborough, we looked at several subdivisions, and then we reached out to those towns and got copies of their zoning to see how those lots were created. I think you should do that before you start making rules and regulations, because you mentioned uniformity, that's what you end up with. You end up with houses that are like subdivisions.
That's all I, all right. That's another thing for the next planner.
I already did it here once.
You get these towns that have limited amount of land that's developable anymore and so they try and squeeze these things into weird-shaped lots to begin with. And so they have to cut, I mean, this is a perfect example, I mean, you've got, you know, it goes in, and so how do you make that work? But that's, in this area, the only place it's developable, so how do you get houses in there, maximize the developers' ability to pay for those houses?
And that's what I said, I think it's something that, you know, we ought to think about just as far as the character of the town goes. I mean, there's another development on the, on the end of Adam Street up, just almost to the Upton line, I think it's on, where they've shoehorned three houses in. Same kind of thing, I mean, you know, and as I said, is this, I think as a planning board, we need to look at the whole picture and maybe begin to think about the character of our town and, you know, not, not to prevent development, but to enhance the character of the town without looking at this kind of a lot where it maybe, there are places where it's inappropriate to put housing built, that's it. So that's all I'm saying.
All right, getting sidetracked, sorry Barry, we're, I'm gonna keep you here for another hour.
This is only a preliminary plan.
Turn all my planning off to you guys every day.
All right, do we have any more suggestions on the preliminary subdivision plan?
I, I have a couple comments, so in order to get, to get Barry to move along here, I spoke with Barry on the side today and talked to him about making sure we have the finite set of waivers, all the waivers that he needs to make this plan work. And you have a memo from Lisa that I printed for you and sent to you electronically that pointed out the advantages to this particular design over the previous design. The roadway's better, the slope on the road, the off grading is better, the drainage is better, the line of sight along Flanders Road, which by the way, was an issue with the, with the previous location, it's, has been made better by this. And I think that even though we are, you would lose a house and you'd place that house in the subdivision, I think it would be better overall for Flanders Road, because now you have one less driveway on Flanders Road. This driveway now is in the new subdivision, so it creates less points of conflict for driving, for drivers along Flanders Road. I think it's a much better design, so Barry needs to move forward with this and I think we need to have him on the, the next meeting's agenda and be done with this before I leave. Be done with this particular preliminary plan before I leave.
Is there still an open question about the perk tests on?
So Barry, what's the, the last lot's perk test result?
There's on, some of the plans, we identified the perk that's been done on them, I've talked to Board of Health and he has witnessed the both deep and shallow and perk tests. I've placed them on the plans, they're very difficult to see, sorry. And all I need to do is shift the zone that was labeled where the treatment, wastewater treatment plant was or the Peta five system, shift it over to the correct unit, so. They seem to be okay with that.
On the full-size plan, the perks are easy to see.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can see the perks if I zoom, but I don't know.
I relabeled them, yeah. I relabeled them and put the perk test, I think I'm somewhere between ten, three and eight.
If you're looking at the printout there on sheet two dot zero, C two dot zero.
Yeah, I just don't know what it means, twelve point three minutes an inch, is that good or bad?
That's good.
Okay.
Um, can I just clarify one thing?
Better than sixty.
Yeah, Jim, you made the comment that this would eliminate a driveway onto Flanders Road, but the problem is that the existing house shares a driveway with the garage next door.
Oh, it does?
Yeah, so it's not, it's, it's not taking away any.
Okay, thank you, good point.
Driveway.
I was trying.
The driveway comes up and you know, the garage is there and the house is there and they have a shared driveway and that garage is gonna remain right where it is, because I think it's a, it's a residence.
I think in the hour of the clock, it's permanent.
Yeah, so as I said, I mean, we're not eliminating a driveway.
Well, we're eliminating a house that's gonna use a driveway, because I think they're, this new house is gonna come out, their driveway's gonna come out on the road.
There wasn't much difference, I mean, just because there were two people using that same driveway, which.
Fair enough, all right.
Where it's been there.
I think it's now, it's like a horseshoe, kind of, if you wanna call it there, they kinda come in.
It is, and they might not need it to horseshoe.
And we could limit that up to just one or whatever.
Well, we really don't have rights to limit anything on fifty-two.
No.
All right, well, keep that in mind.
Right.
I really don't want the new house on C four coming out that existing driveway, they should be coming out on the primary ground.
I hundred percent agree.
Okay. All right, what else, anything? You've been quiet.
Can I ask one? No, I'm good. Let's ask one more question, are you gonna lose the stone wall that's along Flanders due to this?
Possibly.
Shame.
That's on fifty-two, though.
It looks like it goes down.
It's, it's on the, it's on the plan here, it's on fifty-two, Joe.
Is it only on fifty-two, though?
Well, it looks like it.
No, it looks like it goes onto where the entrance.
Oh, I see it, it's right at the entrance of the road now, yeah.
Nice rock wall.
Do you think they can repurpose it for some type of entrance feature?
Sure, I know about it now, I'll see what I can do.
Okay, what else? All right, does somebody wanna make a motion on this? I can do it if.
I move that the planning board continue its discussion of the proposed preliminary plan for a residential subdivision at forty-eight Flanders Road till Wednesday, March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three at six thirty PM as requested by the applicant.
Interrupted, are you gonna be ready for the fifteenth or should we do the twenty-first?
I think I'll be ready.
How much room?
I didn't hear what you said, Barry.
I should be ready.
How much room do we have on that agenda?
Hmm, I don't know, we'll be okay, we need to talk between now and then. If that changes, he can request an extension.
All right, so let, let's continue with that motion, anybody wanna second that?
I'll second it.
Okay, Pete, motion, Hazel seconded, any discussion? All those in favor of continuing to March fifteenth, that's four to zero in favor. Thank you, have a good night.
You know, I think we ought to be able to, I mean, we keep doing these continuances and, and I understand this, but I think we ought to become more realistic about, you know, having people keep coming in for continuances month after month after month, which is what we seem to be getting, and I'd rather push things back more. In other words, okay, you think you'll be ready at X time, we'll take an extra week, I mean, you know, so we don't keep running across this, because I think it's very confusing to the public when, you know, we have something on the agenda and then all of a sudden, three days before.
Yeah, but.
It's being continued, so.
Yeah, but isn't it their right to request a continuance to a certain date?
Yeah, but it's our right to say, take another week.
Yes and no, don't we have to take an action on something if?
We just changed the date, we do this.
So, no, we can, you can vote to continue or you can vote not to continue and make a decision on the application at that point in time.
Right, so you would have to reject the application altogether.
Well, I think what Hazel's just saying is, in like Farouk's situation, have Jim say, no, don't continue the next meeting, can you continue to like March twenty-first?
That's what I mean.
Or April, the first meeting in April, if you're not gonna be ready.
Now, that's all I'm saying, is that I just think it's getting so confusing when we keep getting all these continuances.
And continues to the very next meeting.
But how do we do that in, like in Farouk's case, he's, we're gonna take this up next, he's requested to the fifteenth, he's not here to modify that.
So when, when Jim receives that, we give the plan or the marching orders of saying, can you, you know, keep a schedule where, are they gonna be ready for the next meeting or are they just continuing it to the next meeting, they say?
And to be fair, and for Farouk's case, it's, all right, I, we're just gonna continue those two and I'll, I'll explain the.
It may be a specific situation, I'm saying in general, that happens.
So sometimes the delay is not necessarily on the applicant, it's because, because, you know, the, the planning board's still having work sessions or the, we're waiting for council to rule on something so that, you know, or not rule, to give us an opinion on something, so I'm not saying that's what's happening here, but it could be what's happening here, so.
And that's understandable, it's just there seems to be, like with the ward property, they continued to the next meeting a lot.
Yeah, I'm not even sure they needed to come in, but.
I think they can, we can just ask them, hey, you know, this is looking full, can you schedule?
I mean, realistically, are we gonna be ready? And if you're not, we'd rather push it to the next meeting so that, as I said, I think it is constant continuance, which we keep seeing more and more of.
Yeah.
That's the thing that bothers me.
All right, so I agree with that, I, I'm, I'm not excited about having, you know, an application continued five meetings in a row or eight meetings in a row, or, we saw that with the writings. It was like two years before.
I mean, in that situation, you say, we're not continuing longer than a year.
Yeah.
And if you continue again, we're gonna deny the permit for X, Y, and Z, it's not meeting certain standards.
Yeah, well, maybe we should have done that in that case, because then they would have had to apply under the new zoning and we'd have three affordable homes up there instead of none, but that's different, it's water under the bridge, so. Next item on the agenda, continuation of the public hearing for one ninety-two twelve Oak Street, and I'll take that up with the continuation of the public hearing to modify the commercial component of special permit TOV two thousand fourteen dash one for Village Commons. I have a letter requesting a continuance, I don't wanna have a big discussion on this only because we're missing a member and I don't want, I don't wanna risk them not being able to vote. So I have a letter dated February twenty-seventh, addressed to Jim Robbins. Jim, we hereby request a continuance of the following two public hearings scheduled for February twenty-eighth to a meeting scheduled on March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. One is Hannah Place and two is one Gleason Street Village Commons, that's signed Farouk Ansari, who is the applicant. So.
He's a perfect example.
Yeah, I, I completely agree with you on the, the point, I don't wanna get into a huge discussion on this, so.
It's fine.
If there's no questions, I'll take a motion on this.
I move that the planning board continue the public hearing for the site plan review application for one ninety-two twelve Oak Street and the public hearing to modify special permit TOV two thousand fourteen dash one for Village Commons and one Gleason Street to Wednesday, March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three at six thirty PM as requested by the applicant in the letter dated February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three.
Okay.
Second.
We have a second from John, any discussion, all those in favor, that's four to zero of continuing those two public hearings. Next, we have an informal discussion regarding town meeting zoning articles. We also have an item on the agenda, a discussion regarding a vote to support, I'm sorry. Next item on the agenda is a continuation of the public hearing for the warrant article number thirty-two to update the zoning bylaws. We had requested, Jim, to make a few changes. Jim, do you wanna go through those?
Yeah, so I'm, I don't know why I'm not coming up on the, oh, I know I'm not, sorry, I apologize.
All right, just while you're doing that.
You had requested me to look at four items in Article thirty-two, which is now Article thirty-three in the most recent version of the warrant, which is being discussed by the selectmen this evening to be finalized. Originally, we had Articles twenty-nine through thirty-one, we now have Articles thirty through thirty-three. So though that says twenty-nine, it's no longer twenty-nine. So this evening, we're gonna be discussing one article that you asked me to find the answer to on four points, and I'm gonna go back at each of those four, I sent you an email on February seventeenth where I discussed three of those four points. The other one had to do with our medical marijuana special permit and the attorney confirmed that the town has the right to set the timeline for special permits locally. So currently, the bylaw says two years for a special permit for medical marijuana. Our review committee recommended that it stay unchanged, that being the case, there's no edit to that portion of the bylaw, so you're not gonna see a presentation on that particular item. But the three that you asked me to look at, catch up here. Are Items sixteen, fifty-six, and seventy-two. I'll address each of them individually. Again, the reason that we are talking about each one of these changes in the zoning bylaws because the board felt that some of the listed substantive revisions should be further explained as meaning may be, may have been changed or regulations added or redefined. Specific revisions noted here refer to the noted numbers in the town meeting warrant. So I will go to Item sixteen. So Item sixteen has to do with the fines for violations of zoning or special permits. So Item sixteen says, section two point eight is amended to change the fine amount from not more than a hundred dollars for each violation to the maximum fine allowed under Past General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section seven, except where another penalty is provided. This amendment, the amendment is to come into conformance with state statute regarding violations under the provision of a zoning bylaw or any of the conditions under which a building occupancy, a building or occupancy permit is issued or any decision rendered by a permit granting authority or a special permit granting authority. You may recall, originally, we were talking about having a graduated schedule for fines, first offense so much, second offense so much, and then third and following being a final amount. And the board had discussed, well, what happens if the, if the state legislation changes? What happens if there are maximum increases or if the number of fines you can issue change? So we thought that we would just limit it to the enabling chapter. issue change? So we thought that we were just limited to the enabling chapter, Chapter 48, Section 7. And I checked that with our general code legal reviewer, who agreed that that was probably the best approach. So that's the way the language reads in the warrant now. That was a change, and you'll note that I sent that to the town manager on Friday, the 17th. The new warrant reflects that language, and I confirmed it. Any question on that one? So Number 56, this has to do with licensing board. And as you may recall at our discussion at the last meeting, there is no more quote unquote licensing board. The, the Board of Selectmen is the licensing board for, say, alcohol permits or automotive service stations. They do issue a license that is issued to a perempty or a licensing, and it's for a finite period of time. So 56, Item 56 refers to Section 6.7F. Number one is amended to change licensing board to select board in the last sentence. And as I explained, this section refers to special permits. There is no licensing board granting special permits in Westboro. The select board is the correct reference. Any question on that? See none? Okay, moving on to the last one, which is Number 72. So this is probably the most complex one. This was the one that people asked about, the fines and what are they for? So this has to do with our new zoning bylaws. Section 8.4G is amended as indicated. I quote, "Violations of this section or any condition of a special permit or permit granted under this section shall be punished by a fine." Currently, it says, of not more than $300 per day. So we've strict, we've struck that language, and we've inserted that it would be punished by a fine consistent with the fine structure allowable under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, subsection 2117, except where another penalty is provided. So I discussed this with our legal counsel, and we decided to cite the entire section. So the justification for this change in citing Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, subsection 2117, reads, "The amendment concerns earthmoving activities under the town's earthmoving bylaw and brings the bylaw into conformance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 2117," I'm sorry, subsection 2117, which reads, "Section 17, for prohibiting or regulating the removal of soil, loam, sand, or gravel from land not in public use in the whole or in specified districts of the town, or for requiring the erection of a fence or barrier around such area and the finished grading of the same. The Superior Court shall have jurisdiction in equity to compel compliance with any ordinance or bylaw made hereunder. The penalty for violation of any ordinance or bylaw made hereunder shall be as follows: For the first offense, $50; for the second offense, $100; and for each subsequent offense, $200." So that's what the current state chapter says, and we've changed our bylaw to simply say, we will follow whatever that chapter says so that we don't have to worry if we're out of conformance with the state bylaw.
Is that run on a daily basis?
The third offense would. It says any subsequent offense would be $200.
That means, okay.
And that tracks the state statute.
Okay.
Here's an annoying technical question. Are they going to change that MGL section? Ever? Like, do we have to say MGL whatever or its successor?
Well, it says, except where another penalty is provided, so.
No, no, no. I see, I understand what you're saying, yeah.
I can't imagine they'd change it because that would screw up a whole bunch of towns.
Right. I don't think they'd change the number on it. Usually, it says, when it's changed, it gives you the new one, but it says formally. And based on, on that language, then you know that it's the same section essentially. So that's where I've seen it as formally section blank.
Yeah, and I guess in that situation, which would probably be few and far between, we can amend zoning at that point.
Yeah, and this one is particularly confusing because although it refers to earthmoving bylaws, it talks about special permits. And that's why I think it's really important to just simply quote the reference to the state law and let the zoning enforcement officer then go to the state law and say, okay, it says first offense is the following, and so on, instead of us trying to interpret it ourselves in our own bylaw.
When you give your presentation, can you lump these together in a sense? Because all you're doing is, instead of putting specific fines into our code, what we're doing is just tracking the state statute. So you could say, you know, this applies to numbers X, you know, blank, blank, and blank, so that you individually don't have to go through each one, but can just look, lump them together.
So let me make sure I understand, Hazel. This, this Number 72 only refers to earthmoving. It doesn't refer to any of the other fines.
Right, no, but what I'm saying is that all you've done on the three you've just given us is to, instead of putting our own language in about the fines, we're now going to track the state statute.
Oh, I see what you're saying, sure.
So you can put them together as lump instead of doing.
Well, no, I think this language is actually going to be in the warrant.
It is in the warrant.
Right.
Yeah, so we can't lump them.
Yeah, so, but when you give your presentation.
I can refer back, yes.
Just a faster way to do it.
Yeah, I could say it's similar to the following one. I can look that up and go back to, I think it's Number, Number 16, similar to Number 16.
Exactly. So I think there are a couple of other sections too where it's all just tracking the state statutes. So instead of having to go through those individually, you can lump them together.
And since there are 75 substantive changes, I'm going to have an explanation like this for each one. So there's going to be, somebody's going to ask me a question that I haven't anticipated, obviously, on any one of these that I may think is really minor. They might ask me a question on something that's minor, so I, I need to have an explanation. So my presentation's probably going to be 75 pages long.
Are we going to follow Hazel's suggestion and kind of do a, if you have a question on one, call out two, call, and then only?
I'm going to ask the moderator. That's up to him. That's totally up to him, but yes.
I agree, but in theory, I'd like to be able to just say, and say there's only questions on 15 out of the 75, we can vote the other.
Yep.
There's only questions on one out of the 75, we can vote the 75.
That'd be great.
Right, 11:30 on Saturday night. I'm sure you'd agree.
I'm, I'm, again, it's the moderator's decision, but we'll encourage that. I thought there was an outstanding question on Number 13, which was 23C1, the special permit extending to expiring in three years, or? Wasn't, is that because it's a ZBA special permit, or? I don't, I didn't really understand why we didn't get an answer on that.
John, you raised that, yeah.
He, he raised the question about the marijuana.
I think it was in reference to, because there was two instances.
Right.
Where the expiration we have in town is shorter.
In the marijuana section.
Yeah, the marijuana is specifically two years. Everywhere else, we've changed it to three years.
No, but Number.
So I'm looking at Number 13 right now.
She'll lapse within a period of not more than three years. Okay, I think you're right. Is that, is that, I might read it.
Was it just the marijuana one?
I thought there was another one, but maybe it's not 13.
Okay, I'll just go through. 13 was the first one, so we looked at that. So 16, we just discussed. 27. That has to do with the professional hydrologist in the town. Requires the applicant to pay. Multiple buildings. Two is instead of three. Okay, here's another one. This is special permits for senior living projects.
That moves it to the state standard.
Maybe it was the marijuana one, Joe.
I'm pretty sure it was the marijuana.
And so that specifically in the marijuana regulations?
Yeah, so our, our attorney recommended that we stay with, and our zoning review group wanted to stay with, the two years and not change that one. And the attorney confirmed for me that the local authority has jurisdiction to determine if they want a shorter period for the permit.
But it obviously can't be a longer period. It'd have to be less.
Correct. You can't, you can't go above the three years. So I'll keep going through just to make sure. That's the licensing board question. That's the swimming pool. Signs on motor vehicles, which I think will always be an issue. And we discussed Number 72. That was violations to track the state language. 73 is use regulations, changing the adult entertainment district to allow large-scale solar mounted, and 74 is the use regulation schedule, changing S to SP, and that's it.
Yeah, I think it must have been the marijuana one, then.
I'm pretty sure it was.
Okay, all right. What else do we need to discuss? I know that there was a suggestion from council to combine articles. We, we explained why that wasn't appropriate.
So I think I copied the whole board on this. Did I, did I copy the board on that discussion? Council recommended that we combine our first two articles, so that we combined the article for reformatting and renumbering with this substantive change. And I responded. I know Mark responded too, so I think I copied everybody. There was a reason that we separated them, and that is, we really want the format and the renumbering to be[1281.50][1281.53]intuitive. We really want the format to change. So we wanted that article to stand alone. Even if the substantive changes don't, don't pass, we still have a reformatted bylaw. If we combine them, it's possible the whole thing will fail. And I didn't get any, any response saying, no, you have to combine them. I don't think they understood why we did it that way.
I think it'd be virtually impossible to combine them now because we have already closed a public hearing and voted on the first one, so. And I don't think it's a good idea anyway.
No, I don't either.
I think it's good separated.
Yeah, makes sense. Separate them.
All right. Any other discussion on this?
Nope.
Do we need a vote?
You need to vote to close the public hearing, and then I wrote you a motion.
Okay.
I wrote you two motions on this.
Anybody want to make a motion to close?
I move that the planning board close the public hearing on Article 33, amend zoning bylaws.
Second.
Any discussion? I'm sorry, before we close, is there anybody from the public that wishes to address the board on this? No one here, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? That's four to zero.
I move that the planning board support Article 33 as written in the warrant.
My second.
Motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? That is also, John, I'm sorry, did you vote?
I move, I made the motion.
Okay, you don't have to vote in favor?
No, I didn't. I didn't know we were voting, sorry.
Okay, well, that's four to zero in favor. I'm not telling you how low.
I was just, no, I, yeah, sorry, I blinked.
No worries. Next item on the agenda, we had an informal discussion regarding town meeting zoning articles. I would like to table this since we have a full meeting on the 15th on town meeting zoning articles, but does anybody have anything they want to discuss?
I'm sorry, which one is, was this the last item?
The discussion around the zoning articles.
Oh, the zoning articles?
I mean, we do have a couple of zoning articles, not zoning articles, but warrant articles coming in. I don't think we need, I mean, I think that was just a carryover from the last.
Right.
So.
And would that include the discussion regarding the vote to support the town article for sustainability coordinator?
No, because it's not a zoning article, and that, well, yeah, the discussion regarding the vote to support the town article for sustainability coordinator, we're going to carry that over to the 15th because Sustainable Westboro is going to attend and explain that rationale for that to us. So we're not going to take that up tonight. We do have a discussion of a notice to, of intent to sell and convert land under Mass. General Law, Chapter 61. John and I are both on the open space committee, so we've already discussed this. It's a 1.2 acre parcel on Lackey Street that is, was formerly part of Arnold Orchard's. It's being sold for $300,000. The town, under Chapter 61, has the right to.
Right, a first refusal.
Right, a first refusal to purchase at that price. The open space committee voted unanimously to recommend to the select board, and just, just so you know, the open space committee is also the Chapter 61 recommendation committee, but we voted unanimously to recommend to the select board not to exercise that right, and felt it would be important, or I felt it would be important to put it on this board's agenda to discuss, just to see if that was any.
Makes sense to me for that amount of money. Quite frankly, our money can be spent in another way to benefit.
And I can't find a use for the town for 1.2 acres down there, so.
Yeah, based on location, I think, I agree with you guys.
Same.
Okay.
Although I did, I did grow up on that Arnold Orchard.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, lived up on Stratton.
Well, the other portion of the land would be nice because it's larger. That's just a small piece.
Well, they've been breaking off into small pieces. I don't know how big the lot is now.
They've been before us more than once.
But we do have Chapter 61 still on the remainder, so.
Yeah, they've been pulling it off piece by piece.
I don't think we need to vote anything on that because we don't have to make a recommendation on that to the select board, Jim? Do we, do we need to vote on the Lackey?
They may ask for it. That's why I gave you a complete copy.
I'll make a motion to recommend that the select board not exercise the Chapter 61 rights on the parcel on Lackey Street and the discussion of notice of intent to sell and convert the land under MGL, Chapter 61.
My second, I motion.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Four to zero in favor of that recommendation. All right, I don't see, we don't have.
The meeting minutes just came out.
Yeah, we just got the meeting.
And I have some changes, but most of them were just additions for clarification, except for my one question about the, seemed to be something left out here where it just on the thing, it says wash bay is not intended to be a car wash. Well, what is it intended to do?
Think they're just intending to hose down the trucks?
As I said, it just, it was unclear here in the minutes, so that's, I just had a question there. Jim, I will give you, Kristen is in when? Tomorrow?
Thursday.
Thursday. So I will give you my copy of the minutes where I've made a couple corrections.
Thank you.
And maybe we can vote on them in March.
Yeah, I agree with that. We, so we don't have meeting minutes. We, reports of board members who attend other committee meetings. Well, I talked a little bit about the open space meeting from last week as far as Lackey Street, but we also are in preliminary discussions with a landowner on a 30 acre parcel, and we're talking to the state about trying to get them to buy it. Very close to the upstate forests, so hopefully encourage them to use state funds. And I will have further discussions on that as a, as a committee, but that's kind of where we're at on that.
Good idea.
I don't think there was anything else substantial on the open space. I had a Hakamaka Pond reuse committee meeting the other day. There's going to be a warrant article. We don't know exactly how much yet because we're still researching estimates, but to, whenever you reuse a brownfield site, you have to go to EPA for approval, and you have to get an approved work plan filed by a licensed site professional, so, or there'll be an article on the warrant to fund.
Next fall, the article be on?
Article.
It's on now, isn't it?
Yeah, it's on this one.
That's what I thought, yeah.
And it's going to be a huge amount of money, but I'm not sure exactly how much it is. I can tell you it's probably under 20. And there was talk about funding a fence. That would be expensive.
All the way around, you mean to replace the existing?
No, no. There's a fence all the way around, and inside the fence, there are two lagoons that can't be disturbed. And when I say lagoons, this used to be a Creosote site where they would take telephone poles. And when I say lagoons, this used to be a creosote site, where they would take telephone poles and dip them into a big lagoon of creosote. And so they capped those off, but you cannot disturb those two capped areas. Now, those are, I don't remember the acreage of those two lagoons, but if it's 26-acre site, you've got like three acres of lagoons that can't be disturbed. So there was talk, and about asking the town to fence the two lagoons, and really, you'd only have to fence half of it, because the exterior fence runs along one side of the lagoons, so you'd just have to run a fence around the other side to keep people out. I think, at this point, the committee is going to wait to see what happens with the dispatch center, because that may fund that fence, so...
Yeah, because you don't want it to be an attractive nuisance to... Fence, and they think, "Ah-ha."
I don't know what you're talking about.
But if kids see an open field, too, they go run and play, or this type of stuff. So we have, we do have to take some precautions. I think EPA is going to make us put a fence up, but if we can get the fire, the dispatch center grant to pay for that fence, then that would be a better solution, I think. So, again, this, there's still a lot to do there, but I was hoping to get it open this summer. It's not impossible that we do, but it may be late, late in the season, if we, if we get it. Do have some draft language, again, on the easements on the other side, on Amazon. Council just reviewed them. We're still going back and forth, trying to get that language ironed out, and then we'll come back and give you the final result of that. We're making progress there, as far as the easements for a walking trail, a potential bike trail up to the ballfields, and the additional parking easement. Okay? Any other updates? Anybody else have a committee?
Sustainable Westboro is going to have a meeting soon to discuss the final article, which is to abandon that climate action plan.
Well, that'll be on our agenda for the 15th as well, and we have both, the proponent of that article, who circulated the petition, has been invited to come and speak, and also Sustainable Westboro will also come and speak. We'll hear both sides of it, and then we'll take a vote on whether we support that article. Okay? We don't need to discuss that tonight, because it, all right. If there's nothing else?
I have one just update for future projects. We will be getting an application from CSX to execute Phase 2 of the approved site plan that this planning board approved approximately 10 years ago. So here's another example of a site plan. But they did exercise all of their rights in Phase 1, and they told us that they would be exercising Phase 2 at a later date. So I expect that to come in probably around the 21st of March, and it may only be an informal discussion. The zoning enforcement officer will make a determination based on the plan, if it needs a full site plan review, or if it just goes to what we call a limited site plan review, which is done by staff. So at any rate, it will come to this board. If it's a limited site plan review, the planning board would only comment to the building commissioner. If it's a full site plan review, obviously, you'll have a public hearing, and you'll proceed as you normally do.
Any news on the planner search?
Yeah, the deadline has closed. They received 12 applications. I believe that they're being organized now by the manager's office, and will be sent to the research committee to review and shortlist applicants, so I'm not involved in it.
We have a meeting scheduled for Monday at 5:00.
You do have a meeting? Okay.
When do you, us, for...
The other day, and just was concerned that there seems to be, they seem to be... First meeting of the committee we have next Monday, so we haven't seen anything yet.
Were you able to get everyone to come on the committee?
We're short, I don't know if John can come. Out of town?
He's out of town now.
But I, I thought he, I think he's the one person we have not heard from.
Probably because he's out of town.
Yeah. So everyone else, so far, I think, was going to be, I just, so then hopefully, when we set up a schedule, we'll move this very quickly.
And what's the process for that? The committee is going to narrow that down, and then do first round interviews, or...
I think it'll depend on what the narrowing down comes down to. You know, if it narrows down to seven or eight, then the screening committee might, you know, look at some of this first, before it gets passed to the planning board. I don't know, we'll just see what we can...
Yeah, I mean, it could, could be they narrow it down to two or three candidates and come straight to us, but more likely, they'll run around the interviews. Just two candidates to come.
I would hope more than two. I mean, I, you know, I'd just like to see full range.
Well, I think the search committee may run around a bit more than two.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, but I would hope that, you know, then we'll come back with whatever we decide, two, three, whatever, and then we'll come before the board. So we're going to have to move fairly quickly.
Okay. If there's nothing else, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
A second?
Question? All those in favor? That's four to zero in favor of adjournment.